The City of Hendersonville City Council, Wednesday, October 27th, 2021. Just going to go ahead and call on Mr. Connet to introduce our presentations.
Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. Our first presentation is, we have Ashlyn McCoy, Executive Director from Housing Assistance Corporation, here to make a presentation to you and give us an update regarding what they're doing and pitch an idea that's been talked back and forth between her and Councilmember Smith and some other folks. So I'll turn it over to Ashlyn and we'll do the presentation of a special award and then move on from there.
Good afternoon, good to see everybody. Again, I'm Ashlyn McCoy, the Executive Director for the Housing Assistance Corporation. So I think first rule of business, we are really, really excited to share that our development, Oklahua Village Apartments, was awarded the 2021 Rental Housing Development Award through the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. And in that, you all are being awarded as well as being great partners to that development and with Housing Assistance. So I think Brian might have a little presentation to give and then I would like to present you to the award.
The 2021 Housing North Carolina Award for Rental Development is Oklahua Village Apartments in Hendersonville. In a town like Hendersonville, where land and housing costs are on the rise, working families and seniors on fixed incomes often struggle to find affordable living options. In fact, 28% of all Henderson County households are housing cost burdened. Affordable options are scarce, with the county's multifamily occupancy rates close to 100%. Oklahua Village is helping to close the gap in affordable housing for families and seniors whose needs are not being met by the market. Set across 18 acres and including 17 single-family homes and 78 multifamily apartments, the development is located just 1.1 miles away from historic downtown Hendersonville, putting local residents in reach of all the town's amenities. Developed by the Housing Assistance Corporation in partnership with South Creek Development and the City of Hendersonville, Oklahua Village Apartments offers modern, energy-efficient, three-story garden-style apartment homes that meet or exceed green standards. The one, two, and three-bedroom apartments are affordable to residents at 30%, 50%, and 60% of the area median income and are designed for extended life and low maintenance thanks to the use of high-grade materials. The exterior design of the six-apartment buildings has numerous styles of siding and varying heights of brick and colors to add visual appeal. This development is an inspiring example of a public-private partnership. During development, the City of Hendersonville provided crucial funding that contributed to the infrastructure of the neighborhood. The community is linked to the Oklahua Greenway, which connects two parks, enabling residents to enjoy walking and biking trails. Other amenities include a community center, a multipurpose gathering and activities room, laundry facilities, and a centrally-located playground for kids to enjoy. Oklahua Village has provided safe, comfortable homes for many Hendersonville residents, including one retiree on a fixed income who found himself with limited options when the COVID-19 pandemic began. "As a somewhat disabled retiree on a limited budget, this apartment is truly a blessing," says resident Ron. "My income was limited to a social security check, and I was looking to find a room in a flop house to live out my days. Now I am comfortably situated in a fine housing unit. I credit Oklahua Village as the greatest gift I've had." Located near employment hubs, retail, and supermarkets, Oklahua Village positions residents close to where they work in diverse industries, such as childcare, healthcare, service and hospitality, retail, and maintenance. Resident Tanya says that after moving into Oklahua Village in October 2020, she has thoroughly enjoyed living in her apartment and feels blessed to have the opportunity to live there. Oklahua Village was financed with federal low-income housing tax credits awarded by the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. Receiving plaques are the Housing Assistance Corporation, South Creek Development, and the City of Hendersonville.
Hello, I'm Ashlyn McCoy, the Executive Director of the Housing Assistance Corporation. On behalf of our board and staff, we would like to say thank you for being awarded the 2021 Housing North Carolina Award for Oklahua Village Apartments. The Housing Assistance Corporation's sole mission is to provide safe and affordable housing for people of limited income living in Henderson County and surrounding areas. We are proud to say that the Oklahua Village project is at the core of our mission. A person or family must be able to rent or own a safe, decent home in order to thrive. However, affording the average $400,000 house remains out of reach for many people in our community. These people include our neighbors, our friends, our children's teachers, our local firefighters, the waitresses who work in our favorite restaurants, and the nurses who care for our families, the people who make Hendersonville thrive. The project we are here to celebrate today is an important part of a greater effort to better our community in a continued step forward in providing affordable housing options here in western North Carolina. Oklahua Village Apartments is the fruit of collaborative planning with wonderful partners to enhance housing opportunities for low-income residents in our area. It took the hearts, minds, and persistence of so many to make Oklahua Village a success. We would like to say thank you to the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, the City of Hendersonville, and Charlie Heritage at South Creek Development for helping make Oklahua Village a reality. Without you and your dedication to our mission and our community, this project would not have been possible. Other key partners that we would like to thank include the Henderson County Community Foundation, United Way of Hendersonville, USDA World Development, Churchill Stateside Group, Asheville Regional Housing Consortium, First Bank, and the Partnership Property Management Group. I would also like to thank everyone in our community who believes in our work, whether you are a stakeholder, a fellow community-based organization, or a resident. Your support is what successfully moves our work forward. Today, we all share this honor. Thank you for recognizing Oklahua Village Apartments. The Housing Assistance Corporation is excited and honored to be able to provide affordable housing to our community.
Wait a second, we need to say John.
Yeah. So just personally, thank you all so much for your commitment to our organization and helping make Oklahua Village number one in the state of North Carolina this year. That's very exciting. Just, you know, this honor, this award honors the best affordable housing development across the state. We're judged on design, sustainability, contribution to the local community, public and community support, and other special features. So at this time, I'd like to give you guys the award. Thank you.
And as the mayor's coming up, it's important for us and the public to know that the City Council took the risk of investing in this project and it's a great project, as you can see with the award. And just thank the council for their faith in our staff recommendation and with Housing Assistance.
So now just, I asked Sean for just a few minutes to come and give an update. We haven't seen each other, been able to give much of an update over the last year and a half, thank you COVID. So, you know, to date, we are still running full throttle. COVID slowed us down just a little bit as far as volunteers go, but our staff is committed more than ever to keep serving the communities that we do serve. So just a refresher, we do have four programs that we focus on, including our home repair program, housing counseling, homeownership, like single-family development, and multifamily apartment complexes like Oklahua. So in the past 33 years, we have built 200 homes and 370 apartment units. In 2020, we completed over 386 home repairs, assisted 220 clients with housing counseling, and housed over 650 people in our apartment complexes. We do most of this through local, state, and federal grant funds, and we are one of two community housing development organizations here in western North Carolina, a special designation that we are really proud of. So our most recent projects, as you saw, Oklahua Village Apartments was completed at the end of 2020. That also encompasses 17 single-family homes, which were completed in 2018. Most recently, in July, we finished up a development on Mind Gap Road in Flat Rock. This was a partnership with Conservin' Carolina, and four self-help and four new homes were built there. They're beautiful. If you've not been there, please drive by or I'm happy to take you. We are continually working on a rehab project in the back of that development, but it is complete. Currently, we are working on finishing up Phase Two at our development on South Oak Street here in Hendersonville. So Phase One was completed at the end of 2020 as well, and we hope to complete this Phase Two project in spring of 2022. So that will be six self-help homes, and that's, again, where homeowners help complete the build. And most recently, we are also complete, working to complete two self-help homes right here on Beach Street in the 7th Avenue District. That's in great partnership with you all in the revitalization efforts in that area. That was also the place where we broke ground on our 200th home, so we're very excited about that. So when thinking of housing issues, I like to think of the four As of housing: affordability, availability, adequacy, and accessibility. In front of you, I provided you with updated research that we just received a couple weeks ago outlining housing issues in our area. This was a Bowen study completed by the Dogwood Health Trust. It looked at the western North Carolina counties, so all 18. I specifically brought all information for Henderson County. So this is the most up-to-date research we have. It's very comprehensive. So I would, I gave that to you. I'd like to take a time to take questions about those, if you have any. The big takeaway is kind of, you know, looking at, we need more affordable units to serve the demand, especially in Henderson County. Not only do we have a high percentage of our population that is cost burden, either with homeownership or rental, we also have a high housing gap and not, and the prices that are available remain out of reach. So I'm happy to take questions, and these numbers have changed tremendously over the last five years and even up to two years. So one way that we're combating this, and I've been talking with Jerry and a few others about this idea, is kind of a sustainability model for us as Housing Assistance. I'm calling it the Affordable Housing Fund. And so on your next sheet, I kind of outlined that. So basically, as Housing Assistance, because we are a nonprofit organization, in order to acquire property, I have to write a grant or get a loan of some sort. So we are always, I would say, one step behind any other developer when it comes to acquiring property to build these affordable units, whether that be single-family or multifamily projects. So we have been working internally to start a fund that will help kind of act as a revolving fund, that's the word I'm going to use, because we have set aside some, our own capital that we'll use to purchase property, sell from that property, it'll come back and go right back into the fund. So it's going to be a sustaining model for us for years to come. So Housing Assistance has invested in that. We are looking for partners to also invest in that fund. So the proposition outlined here that I provided for you just kind of goes over the big highlights about why it's important to try to meet that demographic that we need to hit in order to make sure our residents can live affordably. Our goal is to raise $400,000 to kind of start out the initial fund and then have our partners give annual contributions into that pot of fund. So it's just something to think about. I started the conversation, I'd like to continue that conversation and see where partnerships may lie. Any questions?
I'm going to ask a question of which I know the answer. But, so the cost-burden households, that's 30% of their gross income or 30% of their take-home income?
Gross income.
Right, which means it's actually a larger percentage after their take-home?
Exactly.
Right, so they're spending a lot on housing.
They are, yes. If I'm remembering correctly, we had the highest percentages, we were the second highest behind Buncombe County in this category.
And that's household, right? When we're looking at the amount of households, right, this number, 52,000, and then you look at the amount of units needed, is that taking into account the current population demographics or is that anticipated?
This is, these are for your housing gap, which I'm assuming that you're referring to. This is taking into account what we need right this moment, and that's across all income levels, that's not just affordable levels.
Right.
I kind of broke that out for you below.
It seems like we've been approving a lot of developments lately, and, you know, I think we start to get a lot of pushback about that, but we're still nowhere even near these numbers.
You're correct.
Not like, not even a fraction close to them. Yeah, it's crazy.
And I'll let it comment. Ashlyn and the mayor and I were at the LGCCA meeting last week, and so this was also pitched to the county and other municipalities. The exact same presentation was made to them, and Ashlyn is working on the agreement, I guess is the right term, that will be presented to the municipalities and the county to see who's on board for participating. And the idea behind the fund is not that it would necessarily be built in Hendersonville. It would be built in Henderson County, because it would benefit everybody to have this housing available somewhere in the county.
Correct.
Can you clarify, again, the AMHI differences in income levels, just to kind of get a better idea of what those numbers indicate?
Of course. So I'll say for a household of four, because they break it down by number of people living there. So if you're looking at 50%, AHMI, that's about $37,550. You go up to 80%, that's $60,080 a year, and 120% is $90,120 a year.
Okay.
And if we're thinking about, while you're thinking about other questions, one thing I'll point out is, HAC is also working with us with our Community Development Lot Grant Program. We will have a sub-recipient agreement on your agenda next week to approve that will allow them to use, utilize CDBG funds to rehabilitate four homes in the Add Street neighborhood, which is part of that program. So appreciate Ashlyn's working on that and her, and Housing Assistance be willing to take that on. We were, they have the expertise that we do not have, and so it's very beneficial for them to do that for us, and I appreciate it very much.
David's excited to get started.
Ashlyn, what size block of land do you normally look for, for it to really be, you know, financially proper to go in there and do multiple units?
It's not necessarily the size block of land, it's really about the project. So right now, with the capital that we do have and the funds that we do have available, we can really only purchase something small, so, you know, four to eight units. If we were able to get that fund higher, we could purchase a larger tract of land, which would sustain multiple self-help groups, multiple new homes groups, and could potentially be used for multifamily. So it's really just about what the price point of land is and how many units we could get on.
But is there a target that you guys would find, I guess, the best to get the most bang for your buck if this fund was created? What were you, what would you go out and start looking for? Because I know you do a lot of individual homes, you do some smaller.
This fund would be, initially, we would like to find that bigger tract of land where we can kind of seed a nice development for the next several years. So we build in groups of four to six at a time. So if I had a piece of property that I could put 18 to 24 homes on, that serves our program for five years, six years. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, it gives me an idea. The density that would vary, I guess, according to, you know, what you could do permitted and also water and sewer.
Correct.
So you really need sewer?
We would need some infrastructure, yes. That's also harder to find in the more rural areas of the county.
One of the best things that could happen is just a lot of cooperation continuing with water and sewer.
Continuing cooperation, partnerships, I mean, you know, this award today is a great example of that. We have several at the city, our South Oak Development, you guys helped fund the water and infrastructure there, just for those six homes, but it was huge help. So just, you know, continue, continue in the conversation.
There was also a pump station that was...
At Oklahua, yes.
Yeah, at Oklahua, and so stuff like that in addition to funds.
Correct, that would be great.
What kind of reaction did you get? And I know no one's committed, no one's had serious votes on it. What kind of reaction have you gotten with the other municipalities?
Since the LGCCA, I think I got that acronym right, meeting, I've had several municipalities reach back out to me to set up meetings to talk about this very thing. So I think there is, there is interest from the other local governments in the area about helping in this way, or maybe in another capacity. I haven't had those meetings yet, though.
Did anyone mention using the, what is it called?
ARP funds?
ARP money, some of it, to seed it?
Not specifically in that meeting.
We're all waiting for our attorneys to tell us what we can do.
Yeah, that's why I was curious.
No, no, I meant, at the meeting, there was a discussion, because there's now meetings among the municipalities and the county about how do we spend this money? So we didn't even go there in the discussion, because we don't know if we can use it.
That's one reason that we're going to have the meeting, and I don't know if Angie wants to get just a little bit into that, but the meeting in November, we're going to take some time and go through the rules and those kind of things, so.
I have a follow-up question kind of to James. So beside water and sewer, you know, infrastructure type things like that, in working with developers, I'm assuming that there are kind of common developers that you work with?
We are the developer.
So the one that you have, it's, you were partnered with, who did you partner with on the last one?
South Creek Development, Charlie Heritage, he was a consultant for the tax credit application.
Okay, okay. So then you don't even have to deal with that aspect?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
And another challenge that they're going to run into is if it's a development that is not quote-unquote "tax-credit affordable housing," you know, then it's a whole other bell, you know, situation, because it's not as attractive to some people, and that's the gap we're trying to do.
When you say some people, like the residents?
The developers, like, well, for example, aren't there, I'm trying to think, weren't there tax credits at the mill that they sold?
They did historic tax credits.
Okay, so the same thing, the tax credits that you can get for affordable housing, if you're building that's not quote-unquote "the definition of affordable housing," you don't get the tax credits. So that's a marketable item that a lot of developers just aren't interested in.
Right.
And a good bit of research, this, the information I provided you is, comes out of a 500-page document that I've been able to delve through a little bit more. Tax credits are only awarded about 5% in western North Carolina, out of the entire state, that's very limited, so we're extra competitive. It just doesn't happen a lot in this part of the state for multiple reasons.
Yeah, tax credits are not a given. They are very competitive and it, like in the whole, in our region, I think there were two that applied from Henderson County and I forget who else, how many others, but one in Buncombe County got it this year. Maybe next year, another development will get it. But it's, yeah, it's, it's not like saying, oh, well, why can't we do tax credits? It's very, very competitive.
Ashlyn, so if you're developing, for example, the Oklahua Village, and there's some homes there, the people that buy those homes own them.
They do.
What is your experience with people flipping those homes?
We do not see that often. Actually, there are safeguards in place with the USDA program that we use for single-family development, that if they decided to flip, then they would have to pay that equity portion back. Also, it's really important to point out that the, their mortgages that they have for this, not only have they worked so hard to build their homes so they have that investment, but if they turn around and flip it, they're not going to find something brand-new, same-size for the same price point. But that does not happen a lot.
Do they have to, and maybe you said this, and I missed, do they have to hold it for a while? Is there a...
They do, so USDA is the one who administers the program, so we just kind of help facilitate the application and do the build with them at that point. After the build's complete, they're on their own. I mean, they're homeowners and they're responsible for that, and USDA works with them. But there are safeguards in place for a number of years that if you stay in your house so many years, you don't have to pay that equity back. So that's just one way, just one example that they do.
Yes, they do have to hold it for a while?
They do.
Okay.
Who manages the fund?
This Affordable Housing Fund, it would be Housing Assistance, so staff and board.
And so we're, obviously tonight, we're not asking for any kind of action, just wanted to make you aware of the idea, know that it's being discussed in the community around the county, and just make you aware of it, that it'll be something that will ultimately come back to you at a future date.
I'm happy anytime. I think you all have my contact information. Please feel free to go, you know, sit down and have a chat if you have any further questions about this or anything else that Housing Assistance says. I'm happy to meet with you.
We appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ash.
All right, I'm just going to get the noise out. And we'll be done, no more.
Oh, good lord.
I know, you guys, it's been a day. Listen, in case anybody didn't send, see my five chins on the front page of the Hendersonville Lightning today? Yes, five, five of them, you know.
Do you remember what I told you?
So instead, I'm sulking my sorrows in chocolate chip cookies.
It's better to have five, it's better to have five chins than two faces.
And a diet Arnold Palmer.
Thank you.
It's diet?
So at this point.
Love your pearl earrings.
As, as we're eating our snacks.
Where's my Chick-fil-A?
I'll recognize.
Bring it back in.
I wanted to tell Ash a while ago, I've learned long ago that if food shows up in the room, ain't nobody listening to the teacher. Let's get the food out and then we'll start class again.
What is that?
That is a goudsine.
So.
Usually you take like a goudsine, but this one's straight.
So I'll recognize Gracie Urban, to, to talk about our new lead and copper rule compliance support. So, Gracie, it's all yours. I'm trying to get them to pay attention to me.
Yeah, please eat, enjoy your Chick-fil-A.
We have extra cookies for you, Gracie.
I do have a presentation.
And Gracie is our environmental compliance coordinator, so I failed to mention that.
She's a goose trainer.
Yeah, that pipe's surprisingly heavy, too. But thank you guys so much for having me this evening and giving me the opportunity to present to you guys about the lead and copper rule revisions and why we need some compliance support. So if it's okay with you guys, I'll go ahead and get started. We'll start with a little background on lead. So as, I'm sure some of y'all are familiar, as you're passing along this lead pipe. Lead has been associated with plumbing for centuries. It was used in plumbing infrastructure because of its pliability and its resistance to leak, to leaks. The chemical symbol for lead is PB, which is derived from the Latin word "labum", which means waterworks or plumbing, as lead was used to make water pipes. The 1930s is kind of the estimated date of when lead was kind of stopped being used as a water pipe in the US. It wasn't used very prevalently after that time. However, up until the 1950s, lead was commonly used as a goosenecks that y'all just passed by. And it was also used all the way through the 1980s as solder and multiple types of plumbing fixtures throughout people's homes. In the past, lead in drinking water has been regulated by the Lead and Copper Rule, which is set forth by the EPA. This was first set in 1991 under the Safe Drinking Water Act. The old rule basically was a treatment technique type of rule. So lead was treated in the drinking water by using corrosive, or using corrosion techniques to prevent pipes from corroding. So I'm sure a lot of y'all noticed the hole in that pipe was from corrosion. So this is something that utilities use across the US. We specifically use a mix of sodium bicarbonate and ortho and poly, ortho-phosphates and a pH adjustment to treat for corrosivity, to prevent any corrosion of lead from occurring. I'm not saying that there's tons of lead in our water. I'm just saying that is a technique that is used nationwide to mitigate for lead. This old rule is a, what I like to think of as a reaction rule. So it doesn't really kick into effect until there's been a identification of a health problem. It's not necessarily a preventative rule, if that makes sense. The structure basically only compels protective actions after public health threats have been identified. The old LCR rule also occurred at, the sampling for it also occurred at worst-case sampling locations. And for the first time, pretty much since 1991, the EPA began their first major revisions of this rule last fall. There have been some minor tweaks in 2000 and 2007, but nothing as extensive as what has come to pass. So the new rule, it's referred to as the Lead and Copper Rule Revisions. It was passed and it's in the federal register as of January 15th, 2021. The effective dates and the compliance dates have been pushed back to December 16th, 2021, and October 16th, 2024, respectively. For this rule, there are six major changes, and those are identifying the most impacted areas by lead, strengthening treatment requirements, replacing lead service lines, increasing drinking water sample reliability, improving risk communication to customers, and acting on a higher level of protection for children in schools and childcare facilities. And if at any point you guys have any questions, feel free to ask as we go along.
I have one on those two dates. What's the difference in those two dates?
Yeah, great question. So the effective date is December 16th, so that means that the rule is in effect. It's, it's the rule now. It's no longer the LCR, it's the LCRR. The compliance date of October 16th, 2024, is when utilities are required to submit their lead service line inventory, which we'll dive into more on what that means here in a bit.
Got you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so what does this mean for water purveyors across the country? So as I mentioned, we are required to have a lead service line inventory, and that's to do three years from the rule publication date, which is again, October 16th, 2024. With this inventory, there is the potential for replacement of any found lead service lines. Additionally, it's going to be imperative that we have clear and effective communication with our water customers. This will be the cornerstone of a successful Lead and Copper Rule Revision Implementation. We will have to be familiar with new standard sample collection methodology. So the way samples are taken, the way they're treated, is different from how it has been in the past. An example of this is any site that is identified as a lead service line site will be required to sample the first and fifth liters of water. So the first liter of water will be tested for copper only, with the fifth liter being tested for lead. Additionally, this water has to be collected after six hours of stagnation. This means that we cannot show up to somebody's home and be like, hey, we're here to collect your water sample. Hope you haven't been in the shower, or cooking dinner, or making coffee, or washing dishes, because that water needs to be stagnant in those pipes for six hours. So that's where having very clear and effective communication with our customers, having them on our side is really, really important. Additionally, all schools and childcare facilities will need to be tested at a rate of 20% of facilities per year, or until all facilities have been tested at least once in a five-year period. So for those of you who may not know, what is a lead service line, or a service line in general? So a service line is defined to include both the public and private side infrastructure. This includes what serves a home past the utility side of the meter. So for this service line inventory, we are required to submit a report of everything that is both in blue and in red. So that's where this becomes very interesting, very quickly. So we're, we're required to report on things that are not just city-owned, but actually things that are on the private side, because either side of that service line could be lead. So a little more on this lead service line inventory. It must be publicly available and available online for water systems that service more than 50,000 people. And again, that's people, not connections, so we fall into that category. We will have to have ours online. With this inventory, we'll have to designate all material types into lead, non-led, galvanized iron and, or galvanized iron needing replacement, and unknowns. The galvanized iron needing replacement is any galvanized iron that has been identified downstream from a lead service line, because there's potential for lead to have settled into that galvanized iron.
What would an unknown be? How could you not know what a pipe is made of?
Well, we'll get into that, that's a great question.
Okay.
The unknowns are treated as lead until they are confirmed as non-led. So anything that we don't absolutely know that it's not lead, we treat it as lead.
It's lead.
GIS has a free solution that is, that they have designed specifically for this rule for creating service line inventories, and that's actually what this screenshot is from. And that's likely the platform that we will utilize in the future to create our inventory. So it sounds simple enough, right? But then we have these questions, like, what's an unknown? How do you not know?
So every single customer will have a little icon on a map somewhere, just like what you just showed.
Yep, every single connection. And those dots represent the utility side and the customer side. That's why they're split in half like that. And I, I'm just pulling this off the top of my head, because I don't remember, but say red is lead. Say yellow is galvanized iron needing replacement. Blue is PVC, or non-led. The dots mean that it's been verified. So that means it's confirmed, oh, this is definitely lead, or this is confirmed, this is definitely non-led. But yes, there will be a dot for every single connection.
What kind of dot for the unknowns?
I think it's gray.
That's a giant question, right? So they're treated as unknowns until they're confirmed?
It'll be skull and cross and bone.
It'll be red, too.
Yeah.
I may have missed this, and I apologize if I did, but after what year did it become illegal to use lead in water pipes? In other words, is there an assumption that if a house is built after a certain date, it doesn't happen?
1988.
Okay.
And it's a little fuzzy, because after that date, it was kind of left up to states to decide. They wanted to wait till like 1989, or if they wanted to do that in 1988. But for the most part, lead wasn't commonly used after the 1930s, which is good. But yeah, so this is a really large task, because there's a lot of unknowns, because most homeowners have no idea what their service line connection's made out of. You guys know what yours are made of?
I'm gonna dig it up tonight.
But yeah, we're required to report this information to the EPA, and we have three years to figure it out. Service lines are not easily touched or seen to verify the material type, because they're all buried underground. And additionally, a lot of our infrastructure is older than our GIS records, and our paper records do not always have necessary information such as material type. So to just put it in perspective, our first pipe went into the ground in 1888? Is that what we decided, 1888? And then lead was used up till about the 1930s. So there's a 50-year window there where lead was probably used in our water system. Doesn't mean it hasn't been replaced since then, it's just some information. It is important to determine with the highest level of certainty, with a reasonable amount of effort, what we have. We don't want to just list everything as unknown, because, oh, it's easy just to put it as unknown, because then we have to treat it as lead, and then we have a bunch of work cut out for us.
You're right, because right now, we don't have much cut out for us.
Not enough, not enough at all.
Wait till you hear the water and sewer report.
This is just the first presentation.
That's right. This is the fun one.
This is the fun one.
I'm just kidding.
This is the really good stuff. Mike Huffman has a lot to worry about, because we found.
Exactly, exactly. We'll tell Mike he's got competition now.
So you're gonna have to dig up everybody's yard?
Hopefully not. We're trying to completely avoid that at all costs, because that would be very, very expensive.
That was on everybody else's mind.
We would have a lot of really upset customers. But I'm sure you're wondering, what does this mean for Hendersonville specifically? Well, that's really hard to answer until I have that completed inventory in my hand, and I can hand that over to you. But I can say that we do not anticipate having prevalent lead service line issues, like older systems, like in the northeastern parts of the US have. Lead service line inventory is the basis of LCRR, so the Lead and Copper Rule Revisions. Basically, this inventory will tell us how much future work we have to do and how much sampling we're going to have to do, et cetera. But specifically, this is going to require a lot of trust and outreach to our customers and a lot of education, just because the last thing we want to do is lose their trust through this process. If anything, we just want to continue to build that trust and, and continue to encourage them and know that they can trust that their water is safe. So this is a huge data set that we need to research and discover. So we need a little external support, which is why I'm proposing to partner with Hazen and Sawyer. We have partnered with them in the past, so they're already very familiar with our water system. They made the Hendersonville Water Master Plan and our hydraulic model. They are going to provide support to us for creating this inventory, and that support's going to be a lot of different things, and it's going to look very different maybe from projects in the past. But some of the deliverables that they have proposed to give us include meeting materials and minutes for three meetings, GIS maps presenting an assessment of potential location for lead service lines. So that's the big thing, that's going to be very important. And a PowerPoint detailing service line assessments and lead service line inventory options, as well as future recommendations. Essentially, they're going to help us plan and review our records for our service line inventory. They have proposed an anticipated five-month timeline. So if they go ahead and, if we go ahead and sign the contract now, hopefully by this coming summer, we'll actually have an inventory in the works. It probably won't be finalized by then, but we'll have, we'll have something. And again, this final inventory is due October 16th, 2024. And maybe you're thinking, oh, you've got plenty of time, you know, that gives you a two-year buffer. But that buffer will enable us to be as thorough as possible and maximize the amount of time that we have, and enable us to really focus on strong communications with our customers. Addition to this is it'll allow us to research opportunities for funding, to apply for funding, once we know how much service line replacement we're looking at in the future. So I know this is what's on everyone's mind, is how much is this going to cost? So the proposed contract from Hazen and Sawyer is not to exceed $40,000. After this next year, after we have the results of this study, we'll be able to determine the amount of future work needed, and if in the future, we need to add or bring in another third party, that is a possibility. I'm just putting that out there for, you know, just back there in back of your head. You know, if I'm back here next year, I'm like, hey, we need some help. Basically, the more lead service lines we have, the more work's going to be cut out for us, and the more likely it's going to be that we're going to need an additional third party at that point in time. We are proposing to utilize $40,000 from the Water and Sewer Account for engineering services to fund this project. So hit me with your questions.
I have some.
Go for it.
I think I know the answer to this, but are the feds and the EPA, are they sending money to the water systems to pay for these new requirements? Just, just asking.
There is funding available, so that's why I mentioned, like, getting a head start on this is going to be crucial for determining funding and having time to apply for funding.
So I know in the medical world, when there are big changes like this that happen, they don't really tell us super far in advance that they're doing it. They, we get like a memo, like maybe 36 hours before it happens. And they're massive changes.
Yeah.
So how, like, were you guys expecting something like this to come down the pipeline? That they were going to change it?
I first found out about it probably nine months ago.
Okay.
And my job is compliance. I'm sure, you know, you worked in the EPA specifically, you were more aware of it. But that's when I started queuing into webinars and different things on the proposed rule changes. They did first come out with a proposed rule in fall of 2020, so that would have been just a few months prior to when I was really diving into it.
How will you get the data?
Great question. A lot of it's going to be a lot of paper records, looking at timelines when things were built. It's going to be really important, along with reaching out to customers, finding out when things have been replaced, that kind of thing. Testing will help us identify to a point what's in the ground. But yeah, that's an excellent question. That's the whole point why I need help.
If and when there are lead service lines found on private property, what is the city's liability for that, and how will that be managed?
That's a great question. From my understanding, and I'm not an expert on this yet, is the, I actually brought the rule with me. It's like 200 pages long. From my understanding, we, if we find a lead service line, we have to notify the customers annually that they are being serviced by a lead service line. we have to notify the customers annually, um, that they are being serviced by a lead service line. We have to replace three percent of our owned lead service lines a year. With that, if the customer, say we, we notify Lindsay, hey, you're serviced by lead, and it's on your side of the house, and Lindsay's like, okay, cool, like, well, I'm gonna pay to have this replaced, we have forty-five days to replace our side, if our side is also lead. We currently do not have any financial obligation to replace anything on the homeowner's side. We are required to test, and we are required to regularly tell them that they have lead in their home. Great question.
Okay, I think that's all.
Is there not something you can run above the ground to tell whether or not it's lead? I mean, we can tell that there's lead on Saturn, you know, they can tell.
You wanna tell me how we can tell the difference between lead and galvanized iron?
I'm asking, so, so there really is no way to run something above the ground to determine what that pipe is made of? That does, that technology does not exist.
Not yet, not that I've, no.
Not that I'm aware of, but they're probably, I'm not aware.
I mean, sure, yeah, there's XRD, which, you know, is basically an X-ray of the ground, and that can tell you the different ground materials.
Right, but that doesn't necessarily tell you, this tells you it's metal.
Metal or plastic.
Or plastic, right, but then you're still stuck with it's lead.
You can run a metal detector over it.
So.
Confirm from there.
The inventory that we're, you're proposing that we do is going to tell us where the lead is.
That's the goal.
For only forty thousand dollars? This sounds like, I mean, this just sounds like.
I said yet, I said I might be back here next year.
I'm just saying, because this just sounds like an overwhelming, considering all of the water customers in the county. An overwhelming job, honestly.
Huge task, for sure.
Okay.
But thankfully, like I said, we really only have that fifty-year window from eighteen eighty-eight to nineteen thirty that we're really gonna be focused on, and identifying those areas of town first is gonna be where our focus is initially.
So, yeah, so let's just pretend that there's someone in my neighborhood watching today, and my neighborhood was constructed in nineteen sixty-four-ish, sixties, and, uh, they're concerned. What, what should they do? Like, they're concerned they're half, the line from the street to their house?
Uh, it's totally understandable why they would be concerned. I just do want to highlight that we do currently treat our water for corrosivity. So if there is any lead in their pipes, it is being treated with a pH buffer, sodium bicarbonate, ortho and polyphosphates. And basically, what that does is it coats the inside of the pipe and prevents corrosion from occurring. Does that make sense? It kind of makes it like glass.
No, I know, that's, that's what happened to the pipes in Rome. Those, those, they build up in the pipes over time, because when they dig them up, they find all that, it looks like calcium in there. So then, that neighbor, I say, there's a bunch of chemicals in there that have coated that pipe, and you're good. That's what I would say to them, okay?
I mean, yeah.
Is there any reason that we should be digging up our pipes and getting rid of our lead pipes?
It's a great question. I think that's a personal decision, honestly.
No, I, I realize that, I'm just saying that it, it sounds like we have taken measures to secure those, so they're not... I guess ultimately, you need to test the water in your house.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
So that would be the first step, is have your water tested, and see if there's lead in your water, okay?
And there are mitigation efforts that you can do, right, to actually treat that, do you?
Yeah, and if, I mean, if you're concerned, I mean, you can buy filters that are specific for filtering the lead.
Right, okay, but that would be the first thing, is you need to have your water, if you're really concerned, have your water tested.
It'd be a great first step.
Okay, great.
And then let us know, if anyone's listening and they're gonna go test their water, please email me. Tell me what you find out.
Okay.
Good question.
So people don't get in our shape right now, Flint, Michigan. All right, that was, we heard, but that was an incredible failure on all infrastructure, right?
With Flint, I want to highlight that they had an issue with E. coli. And so to treat the E. coli, they increased chlorine. And by increasing chlorine, that increased their corrosivity, and they did not account for that effectively.
But my point in that is just that we're not there, this is not.
Correct.
Anything to do with what we're doing.
And, and we do not anticipate finding large amounts of lead, just because of the age of our infrastructure. It's not something that we anticipate finding a lot of. The end goal is to get rid of all lead.
I apologize for the science lesson, why is it the lead and copper rule?
It's a great question. The focus is definitely on lead, not so much copper. There are a few tweaks to the copper portion, they're just not as prevalent as the lead service line inventory. A lot of that has to come down to testing, and the action level, I believe, has lowered with the copper portion.
Okay.
Funny story about copper. Um, we bought a very, very old house, and it had a very, very old water system and water tank in it. And for the first couple of months that we lived there, I thought that, when I was bathing my kids, that they were just really dirty.
Oh, no.
And turns out, it wasn't actually them, it was the copper that had settled into the tanks and the pipes that we have subsequently had replaced. But, yeah, it took me a while to catch on that it was not just their skin that was so dirty, that it was the water. It was discolored, so.
Were you on well?
Uh, we're, we're in the city. Yeah, on Fifth.
Well, well, water can be very corrosive.
Yeah.
Yeah, this was just old and had sat there, and, you know.
Well, maybe twenty-five, thirty years ago, the city did have a program of testing water.
We still do.
Okay, well, this was individual homes. You went around and they said, will you, at the same time every day for several days, get the water and give it to them? I never did find out what mine was, I assumed, since they didn't contact me, it was okay. So I, do we randomly test individual homes' water right now?
Yeah, so we have thirty-four sampling sites that we go and test. And I actually brought that information from last year's report. There were no detection of lead from the sites that we sampled in twenty twenty. And for copper, the amount detected was zero point zero six eight out of the ninetieth percentile. So, very minimal copper, which is good.
And all that information is published annually in our water quality report that is on our website that can talk about, you can, any citizen can go look at the water quality of what's, what's in the water, and, uh, how we test it and everything, you can find that on our website.
We have really good water.
Yeah, our water comes straight out of the Pisgah National Forest.
Good job, Lee.
Any other questions, concerns? Um, I will say, if, like, this is just something you're interested in, and you want to learn more about it, this article is posted, posted online, anybody can go and read it. It's NC Currents Lead and Copper Rule Revisions, and they have a bunch of different articles that just really explain the changes, why the changes are occurring, how much they expect it to cost, that kind of thing. Additionally, if you're really science-driven, like I am, you can, um, download the Lead and Copper Rule revisions, and there's a chart on the second page that, um, gives you, the first row, row is the original Lead and Copper Rule. The second one is the proposed Lead and Copper Rule revisions, and the third one is what actually passed. That information's on the EPA's website, that's what. And you can also always email me if you have any other questions later. Yep, anything else?
Thank you, Grace.
Yeah, thank you, I guess. How's Adam gonna live up to that?
See, that explains why lead is PD.
Forty thousand dollars.
All right, Adam, thank you.
All right, great, well, this is a short one from me. Zach Trammell with, uh, there is McKimmon Creed, um, is the project engineer and manager for, um, our wastewater treatment facility master plan, so I'll hand it over to Zach.
Thanks, Adam. I thought your name was on there, so he'd be talking the whole time. Good afternoon again, I'm Zach Trammell with McKimmon Creed, uh, project manager for the city, uh, working with the city on the wastewater treatment facility master plan. And I know Jeff has seen this already on Monday, so I'm sorry you had to sit through this again, but, uh, wanted to give you all an update on the results of the master plan, what we've discovered, and recommendations for projects and, and the path forward. Trying to get this thing to work. Uh, so just a quick overview of what I'm gonna bring up to you and discuss. Uh, firstly, is just the purpose of the master plan, why it was necessary. Then I'll quickly go over the design of, the design of the existing facility, and what the facility was originally designed to do, and what it's permitted for right now. Then I'll go through the existing flows and loads that it's supposed to treat at this point, and the projected flows and loads that, uh, we expect to see needed for treatment over the next twenty years. Then, uh, based on those needs, we'll look at what recommendations have been developed to meet those future treatment needs, and an implementation timeline for all of those treatment needs. Uh, so the first thing that I mentioned, why was it needed? The main takeaway here is that wastewater treatment needs are dynamic. They change as your community changes, as it develops and grows, and as the types of wastewater generated changes. So we need to evaluate that regularly, and make sure that our treatment facilities are capable of handling the, the varying degrees of wastewater that are generated. And presently, no full-scale evaluations had been completed since the existing facility's original construction in two thousand and one. So we needed to go ahead and get up to date, and figure out where we stand at this point in time. Uh, second main need was that we have existing infrastructure that is aging at the plant. There's major pieces of equipment that are twenty years old and plus. In typical design life, for those big pieces of equipment, it's twenty to thirty years. So we know that we're gonna have to replace stuff in the near future, so we want to make sure that we're replacing the right stuff. Third thing, there's the capacity limits that we expect to see. We have capacity limits that are defined by the state, that we can discharge into Mug Creek. And we also have a hydraulic capacity for the facility that it can, what it can physically handle in terms of the volume of water that is pumped through and, and flows through the plant. So we want to make sure that those are in line with what we expect to see. And then the fourth point, uh, fourth reason that we did this master plan is that when we do need to expand the facility, this actually satisfies statutory requirements for an engineering evaluation to ensure the state sees what the needs are, and that we are planning appropriately. Uh, quickly go over what the approach was for the master plan. Five-step process for the most part. First step was reviewing the previous engineering reports that have been developed. That's your collection system master plan, which is your gravity sewer and any force management pump stations. We reviewed the information that was in there and the flow projections that were developed as part of it, as well as the solids management plan evaluation that was just completed this past year by our firm as well. And that includes information on how biosolids from the facility are treated. Second step was to make site visits to the facility, review the condition, existing equipment, structures, make sure we understand what shape we're in right now. Following that, we reviewed the actual capacity of those pieces of equipment, structures, the processes. So how much can it treat? Then, uh, when we identified needs, whether it was from a condition assessment or a capacity need, we evaluated alternatives to correct those needs and ensure that they're met. Then, based on those alternative evaluations and the recommendations from them, we developed capital improvement plan for the next twenty years to meet those needs. Uh, really quickly go over what your facility is currently designed for and what it's permitted for. Uh, and start off with just a quick note that it was constructed in two thousand and one, that I've mentioned earlier, and it was built to replace the original treatment plant that was constructed in nineteen sixty-five. It is on Balfour Road there. Uh, it is currently permitted for a capacity of four point eight million gallons per day of wastewater that may be discharged to Mug Creek as a monthly average. That's four point eight million gallons per day on average. It has a hydraulic capacity of twelve million gallons per day. Again, that's just the volume of water that can be pumped through the facility, flow through it without overflowing things, uh, and making sure that it's treated to some degree before discharge. Uh, and the average influent flow that is typically seen over the past five-plus years has been hovering around three million gallons per day. So we are around sixty percent of the permitting capacity at this point. The treatment performance of the plant has been reliable, been exceeding ninety-seven percent removal of the major pollutants that come in in your wastewater. And another point, uh, to, another information to point out is that the permit for your facility already includes some limits for an expansion. When that expansion is eventually needed, uh, that's the first hurdle that we need to jump over, so that's already been established luckily. And these are the limits that are in your current permit for this facility. I don't really need to worry about the numbers too much here. Basically, this is a very typical domestic wastewater treatment facility. It does not have nutrient removal limits, which is nitrogen, phosphorus, basically fertilizer materials. The, again, the future expansion to six MGD falls the same permit limits that are currently established, so that's a good thing. Uh, stricter effluent limits may be possible in the future to include those nutrient limits. Uh, we do not expect that at this time, but it is always best to plan for that possibility, and ensure we're flexible. Uh, this is a graph that kind of summarizes what we see now, uh, the capacity that's needed, and the projected influent flow to the plant over the next twenty years. The jagged lines are your data points from the past twenty years. Main thing to understand there is that your flow rates to the facility have been very consistent. They have not hovered or not varied much. So that indicates that your population, population growth and service area growth has been very consistent and stayed about where it, it is currently. Uh, the lines to the right of the data points, that's your projections, and this information's based off of what was in your collection system master plan that a previous consultant completed. Uh, we have used this information, the flow projections, to establish what we expect will be the treatment needs in the future. And just want to point out here that there is a, the projections do appear to be, um, aggressive compared to your historical flows, but I'll mention kind of why that is in the next slide. And the horizontal lines on this graph, those are your capacity limits, right now, and the potential one in the future. So the four point eight MGD line in purple, that is your current capacity. Six is what you could expand to based on your current permit. Once those influent flows get up close to those limits, that's when we need to expand, and we need to make sure that we, uh, do not exceed our effluent limits from the state or face fines.
How close?
Eighty percent is the requirement for when an engineering evaluation has to be done, and ninety percent, once you get to ninety percent of the permitting capacity on annual average, that's when you have to have permits in hand and construction ready to go for the expansion. Good question. Uh, like I said, historical flows have been very consistent, and the future flow projections compared to historical flows, they appear pretty, they appear aggressive, but they are highly possible to expand at that rate. Uh, and that's gonna depend on the amount of population and industrial growth, of course. You know, how much your community grows. Uh, if your service area expands, we talked about this during the meeting on Monday, the previous flow projections did assume that the service area would be expanded per the two thousand and two Mug Creek agreement, which allows the county and surrounding towns to send wastewater to your collection system, which would be treated at the facility. So it accounted for that. It also accounted for private system conversions, which would be failing septic tanks if you're in surrounding county areas that are not served currently, as well as some, uh, private wastewater treatment facilities that were maybe constructed as part of developments. Those are assumed to be converted at a rate per year. If any of that information changes, then your flow rates that are expected will change, and then the capacity that you need at the plant will also change. So what we always recommend is that you continue to monitor your influent flows and update those flow projections regularly, and that will help you adjust your capital improvement plan and move things as needed to, uh, prepare for those eventual developments. One other thing to point out about the future flow projections, uh, you all do, the city has a proactive plan for... you all do, the city has a proactive plan for reducing influent infiltration, which is groundwater and surface water that gets into your collection system, which is basically just clean water that dilutes the waste that needs to be treated. That program replaces undersized pipes, replaces broken pipes, and fixes things that are capacity limitations in your system to reduce the INI and also reduce sanitary sewer overflows. That will help reduce your future flows and the peaks when wet weather events happen. So storms, it's going to reduce how much clean water gets into your wastewater treatment facility, which reduces the capacity that we need. So again, that timing of growth, to your point, that is based on what happens with the flow projections. The influent loading to the facility, this is essentially the strength of the wastewater, how potent it is, how much we actually have to treat. It's been very consistent over the past seven years in this data alone, and it's just very consistent with domestic strength wastewater, and we expect that to continue. So the future treatment needs will essentially be based off of the same concentration, the same waste strength that you have right now. The last piece of information on the existing facility that I think is very important to point out, again, is the hydraulic capacity. This is the, just the physical capability of the facility to move water through it. We knew going into the master plan that during storm events, there are very high flows that get into your collection system. Some of that's because of influent infiltration, which is groundwater and surface water. And that is, we know that that exceeds the capacity of the wastewater treatment facility right now. To what degree, we can only model it to figure it out and make our best assumptions. But based on modeling, that's under a two-year storm event in 2025, it's predicted that the volume of flow that exceeds the capacity during that storm event is 3.68 millions, million gallons. Some of that's going to back up into your collection system. It may not overflow entirely, but that can, you know, lead to sanitary sewer overflows, of course. So we know that flow equalization, which is just storage of that excess wastewater that can't be treated at that moment, is going to be needed, as well as improvements to your collection system to prevent a peak flow like that from happening. So it's going to be a dual-edged sword, going to have to attack it from both ends. We also are recommending that the plant also be expanded to upsize its hydraulic capacity. It will need to be expanded from a permitted capacity, and it's typical at that point, you expand it to treat a higher hydraulic capacity as well. When you do that, you are going to limit how much peak flows exceed the hydraulic capacity. So that's going to reduce the size of the structure that you have to spend money and construct to store that excess wastewater. And if we fail to do this, then the, again, the point made there is that you could potentially have more sanitary sewer overflows. You could potentially have MPDS permit noncompliance, that's the discharge permit to the creek. And again, it, storage and expansion of the wastewater treatment plant is not the only solution to resolving these peaks. You do have to attack it from the collection system side. Yes, please?
Can you go back to the last slide?
I can.
So, design, expansion for 15 million gallons a day. I mean, that's like three times its current capacity, right?
Correct, but the current hydraulic capacity is 12 million gallons per day.
Okay, that's the number you're talking about?
Yes.
My fault.
You're fine, no problem. Yeah, that's a peak of 2.5 times the permitted capacity.
Got you, okay. That was, you're comparing that to the 12 million capacity, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
So let's look at some of the major needs that have been identified. The steps we took, again, we did condition assessments, capacity evaluations of all the pieces and parts in the wastewater treatment facility, and we reviewed the previous studies. Again, we developed alternatives based off that. The first one we wanted to look at was the baseline, so what if we just continued to do the same thing? And then we evaluated feasible technology alternatives, so improvements that may achieve better treatment. And then, of course, we incorporated the city's preferences through discussions and meetings. And we compared those alternatives to determine the recommended one, based off of cost from a capital and an operating standpoint, the constructability, how easy it would be to implement, your effluent quality, how it would impact the effluent quality that's discharged, maintenance considerations for the staff that has to maintain it, energy efficiency, which again leads into cost, and then environmental impacts from the space it's needed. If it impacts wetlands, or, you know, if you have worse effluent quality, that has environmental impacts associated. And based off of that comparison and the development of the recommended improvements, we then prioritize those needs to establish the timeline of your capital improvement plan based off of the remaining life that's expected, the existing equipment, when regulatory compliance limits would be met, when they would need to be met, capacity needs, again, related to the flow projections, and then reliability and operational flexibility needs. The overall goal of all this process was to make sure that the existing plant is the right place where we spend our money, and it's the right place to continue to treat the wastewater. We wanted to make sure that we didn't need another treatment facility somewhere else to be more financially feasible, environmentally responsible, things of that nature. And once we have determined that, we wanted to optimize the investments that are needed to the existing facility so that we're spending our money wisely. There we go. So, going to jump right into the immediate improvements that were identified. The first one, I believe probably mostly all already know about, is the UV disinfection system replacement. That's what actually disinfects wastewater after, or before it's discharged. And the aeration basin repairs and rehabilitation is the second one. So, starting off with the UV disinfection system. This, again, is at the very end of the plant. This is what disinfects wastewater before it's discharged to the creek. And the existing equipment was installed when the plant was constructed in '01. And we know that it has been hit by lightning on multiple occasions. It's had a lot of equipment failures, and it just needs to be replaced. It's very unreliable. Recommending to construct an additional channel with a new UV disinfection system adjacent to it, sized for that 6 million gallon per day permitted capacity, and increase your hydraulic capacity as well. That new equipment's going to be more energy efficient than the existing, which will help offset operating and capital costs for this project to an extent. And we're recommending that the existing equipment be maintained solely as an emergency backup. Design is already underway on this. The total estimate of project cost for this replacement is 2.8 million, including engineering fees. Second immediate need that was identified based on the condition assessments was that the north wall of aeration basin number two is bowing outward, and it needs to be immediately reviewed from a structural perspective and implement any repairs that are recommended from that review to prevent a failure of that wall. That's 2.4 million gallons of wastewater sitting there. We don't want it ending up in Mug Creek untreated. That project cost estimated at $2 million. And we'll point out that the water that's standing there in those ruts was tested for wastewater indicators, and it was found to just be groundwater, so, or stormwater.
If that wall were to break?
Yeah.
I know it's not about to break. Would that shut down the entire wastewater treatment plant?
No.
Or just that particular well?
Just that particular basin. There is a basin number one is the exact same size. It would significantly stress the operation of the facility, though.
Which would mean?
Potential.
Backups in the city?
Either backups, or you continue to treat as much as you can, but you may not meet your effluent limits.
You mean, what we, is treated is not as clean as what it had been before?
Correct. So let's choose one or the other. Good question. Near-term improvements, this is the next five to six years type timeframe. This is what's going to get you to the 6 million gallon per day expanded capacity as well, which we expect is needed based on the flow projections. I'll just go ahead and jump into these without summarizing for sake of time here. The first one here is the headworks improvements and flow equalization project. This is the project that is needed to alleviate that hydraulic limitation of the facility. This is going to include the influent pump station, which is where all the wastewater goes to first in the plant and gets pumped up to be treated. Includes screening to remove trash and debris, and grit removal, which removes sediment to protect pumps and other equipment. All of those pieces of equipment need to be upsized and replaced to be able to handle that higher flow. Flow equalization I mentioned is needed to prevent those SSOs and reduce the peaks through the plant. And the screening and grit removal equipment needs to be relocated to accommodate and better protect that equipment, the expansion to the influent pump station. We looked at a ton of combinations here, I won't bore you with all them, but just for the sake of, an idea of how much we looked at here, since this is such a major need, we looked at a ton of combinations of alternatives and compared them based on many factors to try and come up with the most feasible, cost-effective, and responsible solution to this, this need. Based on all those comparisons, we need to construct a 3 million gallon inline flow equalization basin. Cookie?
Cookie for that one right there.
Yes.
I know.
It's not over. But this is what's needed to meet that need. It is a large project. This cost here reflects the current climate that we're in with construction values. And it is $27 million. But this is what's needed to protect the system from SSOs, MPDS permit noncompliance, and fines that could build up over time.
So in other words, should we not do that, we're subjecting ourselves to multiple fines from the state? Looking at Lee Smith now on that one.
Won't say it will happen, but it could happen.
It could happen.
Question on two, did that include a retention tank at all in that?
The storage tank to hold the ex, yes, it does.
What size was it?
3 million gallons.
3 million.
And that would serve the needs through 2040. So for the next 20 years, and current and through the next 20 years.
And how much would, can you pull that off the top of your head? How much would a 3 million gallon tank cost? What part of that 27 was that?
So that part alone is about 1.5 million. But you have many other pieces and parts that have to go into this, with pumps, expanding the pump station and other, many other aspects of this project.
Yeah, I was just wondering if it would be $4 million?
Yeah.
Something like that. More likely, right?
Yes, if you include, you know, what?
Everything that makes it up, that makes it function.
Approximately four or five million if you, if you don't include any other parts.
Alright, thanks.
Sure.
So the inline flow basin actually includes the storage tank? So that project is inclusive of that?
Correct, if you see the big circle kind of bottom right corner? That's okay.
It's all very small. So small.
Yeah. That is the, that is the storage tank. That's what's going to hold the excess wastewater that comes to the facility. And then, once that peak subsides, that stored volume will be treated. Any other questions on that?
How long would it take to do that?
To implement construction?
Yeah.
Likely it would be a one to two-year project to do all of this work. At least two years if you include all of these pieces, just from a construction standpoint, since it is a very significant project.
Jerry, they're going to give you a full timeline if.
I'm sorry, I haven't already looked at it.
So you can save your money. Your time to save up.
Save up my money.
The second near-term need is based off of a trigger that was just experienced with the recent increase in disposal costs for the biosolids, which is the sludge that is produced from the treatment facility. That recently, the city currently disposes of that sludge in landfills. And that cost went up from $56 per ton to $96.50 per ton. So if you, thinking in big pictures, $300,000 per year to almost $600,000 per year is what the jump looks like. The other thing here to remember is that landfills can continue to do this without warning, and they can also completely reject acceptance of that sludge without warning.
So there's no state regulating of that? They have the monopoly, and they can shut it down when they want?
That's correct.
And are we limited as to where we take it? In other words, there's not a competitor? I say use the word competitor, but is there not somewhere you could drive, else you could drive it?
There are other locations you could drive it to, but again, that just continues to balloon your cost. Yeah.
And they're private?
Mostly, yes.
That is the definition of a cash cow right there.
And there's no like enzymatic type process to treat?
I'm glad you heard, yeah.
To break it down?
And I'm thinking those.
So that's what I'll get into. That's, that's how we're going to prevent that from being a significant issue for the city.
So there is a process?
There are many options, and we've recommended the most feasible one.
Okay.
So, if I can get these slides to work. We're recommending that the, the facility be expanded to include a biosolids thermal drying facility, which is essentially, think about a big hair dryer, pretty much. You put the sludge on a belt, it dries it, it treats it, pasteurizes it essentially, and produces a Class A EQ product, which is just exceptional quality. You can apply it as fertilizer anywhere, including your front yard. And it will significantly reduce the amount of sludge that needs to be disposed of by approximately 80%. You're going from a very wet product that you're paying to haul water for to a 90% dry product that's 80% less volume there.
Is someone going to buy that from us, or?
It's possible, yes.
I shouldn't say buy from us, but that doesn't have to go in the dump, then?
That's exactly correct.
Jerry, you're right, you literally could sell it. Right, yeah, yeah, but I'm saying this is, the other stuff's got the biological agents, that's why you can't put it in the dump, but this would not have that.
That's correct. Active biology.
Right, that's why I can't put it in the field.
That's correct.
Or even if they don't buy, and you could just take it at one of our turf growers or somebody and just spread it.
Give it away.
Give it away, and then you don't have that cost.
Shouldn't budget it, being able to sell it, but it is that quality? No, no, I know that, right, I don't mean budgeting it, but we don't, we're not limited to the dump, then?
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. We want to expand our disposal outlets so that we are not limited to this monopoly that can.
That monopoly, yeah.
Bite down on you. We went toward a local drying facility that's very similar to what would be needed at the city of Lenore just the past week. Very similar to what would be recommended for implementation at the wastewater treatment facility.
I suppose ecologically, that's the better way to go anyway, because what ultimately comes out is much safer than, than the sludge.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're protecting the soil quality as well as water quality due to potential runoff.
Yeah.
If you applied untreated sludge. 300 degrees Fahrenheit. But the sludge coming off, you can literally touch it with your hand, because it cools down at that point.
Looks like coffee grounds.
Weird.
Right.
Use hand sanitizer. Moving along. There are other pieces of the sludge treatment train that also need some help. The existing gravity thicker number one, which thickens the sludge before it's dewatered and eventually dried. That was the original anaerobic digester that was built in 1965. That picture right there shows you the conditions it is in. It needs some structural repairs to make sure it does not fail. There is also a need for thickened sludge holding tanks. These are small tanks to store the sludge between thickening and dewatering. Helps ensure that the process moves along as needed. And there's also some various mechanical pieces of equipment that need to be replaced at that same time. And that's recommended to be completed at the same time as the thermal drying facility, so all those needs are addressed and that dryer operates as needed. Cost of that project is 17 million, estimated cost. These are big projects, and it's just the nature of the world that we're in. The third immediate, or near-term need that is needed to get to that 6 million gallon per day permitted capacity is replacing existing filter number two. This is on the back end of the plant, right before the UV disinfection treatment. We replaced filter number two, excuse me, filter number one, two years ago, with a new treatment technology that doubled the peak flow and tenfold increase in the average flow capacity within the existing footprint. The filter number two needs to be replaced in like kind to make sure we have redundancy and meet regulatory requirements for treatment capacity. That project cost is 2.2 million, based off of, directly based off costs that we saw for the first replacement, since it's the same equipment that would be needed. for the first replacement, since it's the same equipment that would be needed. The last near-term need for the facility, you know, again, this is the next 5, 6 years here, replacing the existing blowers. These provide the air to the biological process that treats the wastewater. There are large pieces of equipment, as you can see there. They were originally installed in 2001. They are reaching the end of their useful life. The city also does not have any capabilities to control how fast they run. They're like a pump, they, they can run either full speed, or you can ramp them down. If you run them at lower speeds, you save a lot of energy cost. So, at the time of that replacement, when that, those pieces of equipment are replaced, we recommend that they be replaced with a technology that can run at a lower speed, and that energy savings can help offset that cost. Blowers are one of the most significant energy users at a treatment facility, so that can be a major offset of costs. That equipment replacement project is 2.3 million. Yes, please?
Do they make, are you able to generate solar power for these types of machines?
You can. Each one of those, however, is 200 horsepower, so it's a very large energy use. You would need a very large solar farm to be able to power that and have a battery to, you know, to store that solar energy. So, you know, based on site limitations, that wouldn't be feasible at the existing site, but not to say that that couldn't be implemented at other locations within the city, if desired.
That number 2 includes structural repairs closing in that whole building and stuff, right?
Correct. That would need, the building would need to be enclosed to protect the new equipment. That's right.
Now, when, these would be able to modulate?
Correct.
Right? So, there's times when you need higher-
Absolutely.
And, and does it sense that, or does somebody have to do that?
Yeah, there is some simple process control equipment that can be installed, just dissolved oxygen meters in the basins, and that can be tied into a control scheme to make it automatically ramp up and down.
So, a person doesn't have to stand over it all the time?
Correct.
Okay.
And I guess you put it, for lack of a better term, indoors, because it's not subject to the changes in the weather, which I guess wears down over time, is that why?
The temperature, it would still be subject to changes in temperature, which impacts how much energy is needed, but, yeah, it protects the intake condition, and it protects the equipment from damage due to dust and stuff that would be in the air, if it was outdoors.
Is that the big air filters on the top?
That's right.
UV damage, one of the, right there. Yeah. There's a lot of damage.
UV damage to the, to the exterior surfaces, yes.
You said something, I guess, whenever we were, last night?
Monday night.
Monday night.
Whenever it was, that lightning had damaged some of our equipment.
The UV disinfection equipment.
Alright. How do we prevent that from repeat? Is there mitigation there too?
Yes, there are. And that project includes mitigation measures to protect the UV equipment, because it's very sensitive to those types of things. Essentially, it's copper wire grounding in, you know, installed around the structure and little air terminals on the structure where it would attract the lightning if there was a direct hit, and it would send it to ground, rather than to the equipment.
I forgot to ask you that.
That's a good question, very good question. Okay, moving right along. Any other questions though? Alright. Long-term improvements, these are the things that are going to be needed more in the 10 to 20-year timeframe, based on the flow projections and treatment needs at that point. The first one is a conversion of the treatment process that is used. This is going to allow the city to continual, to continue to achieve a natural treatment process that does not require chemical usage, and it also provides the flexibility for nutrient removal, if those limits are imposed by the state on your discharge. The timing of this will just depend on if that total nitrogen limit is imposed, and how much actual loading increases in the future. So, this may not be needed, but it is planned based on what we have seen in the projected flow projections. That is estimated at 1.7 million. The next project is the belt filter pressure replacement. This was identified based on the condition assessments. Again, 20-year-old piece of equipment, it's going to eventually fail. We expect it can continue to be maintained for the next 5 to 10 years reliably, so this is in that more long-term range need. And that estimated cost is approximately 1.8 million for the total project.
Would it, the dryer wouldn't replace that?
No, it would not. The sludge needs to be thickened and then dewatered first to reduce the initial water content.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you would have to have a much larger dryer and significantly more expensive dryer.
Okay.
Good question though.
You didn't say that when I asked it, Monday night.
I, I apologize. I'm just trying to sprinkle in new details.
Jerry, I was looking for everywhere to save money too, I know what you were doing.
That will save you money by replacing that equipment.
Are there better chemical processes to, like, denature the products?
So, it's actually funny you ask that. The plant was originally built with a lime stabilization process to chemically treat the sludge and be able to land a plant. The issue with that process is kind of twofold. It's very smelly, is a horribly smelly project, or process, and it's also very aggressive, so it eats and destroys equipment very quickly. The second part of that problem is that you need a lot of land to dispose of that sludge. You know, land availability here in Henderson County is a lot better than in Buncombe County, but it's still much less available than on the eastern parts of our state. So, that really hinders our ability to find disposal outlets for that type of treatment process. If that outlet was available, and we had a ton of land that could be used-
What's a ton?
I'm talking about hundreds and thousands acres.
Okay.
Near people's houses that had to smell that.
Yeah, and then, yes, very different treatment scheme.
You're able to do it in farm country, where there's lots of large fields-
Exactly.
Particularly for cattle and the big farms where they grow Bermuda or the various grasses that the animals eat, so it's-
That's correct.
Yeah, most of them are more interested in the lime than they are the biosolids.
Correct.
Lenore-
Lee, can you come to the mic?
Sorry, I was just going to say, when you lime stabilize, people are more interested in the lime than they are the biosolids. And Lenore was actually, had that same situation. And they, they went from a lime stabilized sludge, which you're adding solids to it. So, you're not reducing your volume, you're actually increasing it, but they found that, you know, the ag community liked the, you know, they liked the lime more than the biosolids, because now they're having to re-educate, because they're going, they're doing without the lime now, so it's going to probably be a different market for them.
Thanks, Lee. Man, if there was a chemist who had a lot of time on their hands, this would be some really good-
Lucrative inventions.
Develop some-
There are many out there.
Yeah.
But yes, the biosolids dryer project is, a lot of evaluation went into that and found that it is the best fit for limiting the amount of sludge and also the disposal markets that are available.
I had a dumb question, but is there any explosive risk with that?
That's actually a very smart question. There is, depending on how you store it, if you, there is a potential risk of reignition on the biosolids that are dried. I won't get into all the chemistry, but basically, if you store it in an enclosed space, you have to blanket it with an inert gas.
Okay.
That is a very good question.
We wouldn't do that.
I'm sorry?
So, we would not do that?
You, you could store it in an open space, and that risk is averted.
Okay.
Yeah. That's the only time that it is a risk though. Finally, the last major need is-
Wow.
The expansion to the facility. And expansions to treatment facilities are very large projects, again. This is very, the cost of this type of a project to expand and add additional treatment trains is very similar to what we see across the state. On, you know, any municipality, you're going to be paying, you know, anywhere from $10 to $40 per gallon of additional capacity that you get, and that money adds up quickly. This would get your treatment facility to, from 6 million gallons per day of permitted capacity, to 7.8 million gallons per day, based on the flow projections. And that's a, so that's a 1.8 million gallon per day jump, multiply 1.8 million by about $20 per gallon, or somewhere in that range, you end up in that cost range. And it is a large project, and again, depending on when the flow projections hit, how much actually occurs, that's going to impact when this project is needed, if ever. So, implementation timeline, this is obviously, need to know this so that we can budget for it. For the first 2 years, we need to go ahead and implement the immediate improvements, which is your UV project and your structural repairs to basin number 2. Over the next, from 2023 to 2026, is when you need to begin implementing the near-term improvements and expanding the capacity to 6 million gallons per day. Again, timeline just based on flow projections, so it needs to be adjusted as those change. 2027 to 2031 is when you need to begin implementing the long-term improvements, beginning with the belt filter pressure replacement, and then planning for the financial aspects of that large facility expansion to 7.8 million gallons per day. Starting in 2032 to 2034 is the design timeframe for that large expansion to get from 6 to 7.8 million gallons per day. Those big expansions take a long time to design, 2 to 3 years, and that's reflected here. And 2035 to 2040 is when that expansion would occur. Construction would actually begin in that time and be completed, and then you need to begin planning for beyond 2040. Or, I should say, you have already begun planning for beyond 2040, and you start implementing those changes.
We will not be part of that U.
Maybe I will.
No, you might, but I will not be part of that U. Not those last numbers down there.
That is, so that is all I've got. I know I've kind of hit you with a lot of big numbers, but please ask me any questions that you do have.
Zach, one, one question. Again, all this is based on, you know, it's a plan, it's based on projections, but it is great, we need this. You know, the question that was brought up Monday night was, okay, this cost versus building a new, a second plant somewhere?
Yeah.
Maybe talk to the council about, you know, this rehabilitation cost related, how it compares to if you had to go build a second plant somewhere, or a new plant. I think it's important for them to hear that.
Yes, thank you for reminding me. So, the total program cost over the next 20 years, we compared that to what if you just maintain the existing plant and then built another smaller plant to help supplement the capacity needs? The comparison of those 2 alternatives, if you maintain the existing and built an additional facility, so you have 2 to maintain, that's at least $20 million more over the next 20 years than the current recommended plan. If you wanted to look at just completely replacing existing facility, that is again, another, you know, $30 to $50 million more than the 20-year plan that has been identified.
Well, more than the roughly 70 million that you just talked about.
That's correct.
So, to start from scratch and build a brand-new plant that meets all these needs is $120 million.
Yes, and I'll give you an example. The Charlotte Water, you know, Charlotte Water is planning an expansion or construction of a new facility on the west side of the city, and that is, I can't recall the exact capacity, but that project is in excess of 200 or even 300 million dollars. And it's not much larger than the size that you would need for this facility. Now, of course, differing things go into that, treatment needs, nutrient removal limits, but yes, it is a very large and expensive project.
One thing you might touch on is the savings when it's dried. We said 80%, but you actually applied a number to it on Monday night. Was it 300, 600? It was $600,000?
Yes. If we continued, if the city continued to dispose of the, just the dewatered cake, not implementing a drying facility, then the current disposal costs for this year are going to be close to $600,000 per year.
So, that is a significant, you'd reduce that, what'd you say, 80% probably? That does help, that one wasn't anything kind of low off.
And again, you're at risk of that disposal cost increasing rapidly without warning.
Or being, you have nowhere to take it.
Yeah.
And the other thing that was really good was when you picked up on, got to get that wall fixed.
Yep.
Yeah, it was a shocker, but it was, it was very well conceived.
And-
Made it where I could understand it, but this is one of those things that, for a long time, people are going to have to just, we want to keep delivering, which to me is the most important thing, just about what we can do, is just deal with it. We don't know what the county's going to do, if they're going to, if they decide to go into it on the east side, and that'll obviously make new councils look at it and see where it needs to be tweaked, but any way you look at it, at least you have a plan.
Yeah, and you know, I've told you before, the sewer system is, in many ways, it's a national security issue. If you turn that thing off, you shut our city down. So, if that, for some reason, doesn't function, our city, our city just totally shuts down.
I would not want to be, like, getting into this business. I mean, we're here, and we have no choice but to be in the business.
When you look at what it costs to build a new small-
But I, man, wow.
So-
That's like, that's, that would not be something I'd want to get into.
Definitely, I, as I said Monday night, be remiss to say, you know, that where we go from here is, you know, we will take Zach's plan or McCamara's plan and prioritize, put things in CIP, and bring them to you in smaller bites and those kind of things, for you look as we get into budget, into the budget process. And like I said, we've already started down the road on the UV, and we, and we, UV protection, we can use ARP money to do that, and then also, we have, or at least I think I can, and then, we also have a line and some other money that may be available to do some of this. But the engineers in the room and Lee and Garrett would, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, you know, the, the policy decision the council has made, we made a couple of years ago, and I think it was the right decision at the time, was that we were going to put all capital improvement cost, we're going to build everything into the rate structure. Everything was built into the rates. But as we go forward and look at the growth in the community, and looking at, you know, the growth that we're having plus these costs, the discussion that the council and the, and I told this to the water and sewer group Monday night, is we may want to look at, again, go back and look at system development charges. With all of this development that we're having and growth in the, in the area, there may be opportunities to use the system development charge to help generate revenue so that, so that 100% of any of these capital improvements are not put on the rate payers, but it's paid on as the growth. I mean, that may not, it very likely will not be popular with our business community, I admit that, it may not be something the council wants to talk about, but it is something, again, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that as a potential opportunity for city council to discuss in the future after, and we do regularly have rate studies, it'll be something that will be in the conversation, so I just thought it was appropriate to say that at this point.
I have a question, Madam Mayor, may I ask? You touched on at the beginning about reducing the infiltration and inflow as an integral part. How much of the plan involves an aggressive I-N-I reduction program? I know that we've talked informally when we've discussed ordinance amendments and things like that, that could help to improve infiltration and inflow, and if you haven't made those recommendations from a legal standpoint, I'd be interested to see what kind of ordinance tweaks and improvements that could be made to help maybe extend, you know, extend the timeline or whatever. I don't know how much of an impact that has, but I just am interested in your thoughts on that.
So, a proactive inflow and infiltration reduction program will have a, could potentially have a very large impact in reducing the inflow, especially during wet weather events, which is when you see that need for a big storage tank. We did not provide recommendations for that, since that was completed previously by another consultant, which the city had completed in 2019. That was completed in 2019, and all the projects had been identified, and the city is currently in progress on the most critical ones of those, which are your Clear Creek-
Mud Creek-
Mud Creek Interceptor. Yeah, those 2 are the most critical, and those are already progressing forward and fixing those leaky and undersized pipes. fixing those leaky and undersized pipes. From an ordinance perspective, I can maybe let Lee touch on that a little bit, but from a maintenance, prevention of SSOs, fats, oils and grease ordinances are implemented in all areas of the country and those, I believe the city already has one of those, so continuing to maintain that would be critical as well. That won't have an impact on treatment facility capacity, but it will protect the city from Hopefully that helped answer your question.
It did, it did. I mean, we just had some informal discussions about like with private systems and private lines and what ordinance provisions we might could put in place to maybe reduce the number of private systems that are out there or get people to address the problems in their own systems since they're connected into our system because we really don't have a lot of regulations on private systems that don't come through us. My understanding is those get permitted by the state and so they're not necessarily built to our standards and so staff and I have informally started talking about that, but I just wondered what your thoughts were on, on some of those things.
Right, and we have helped the city in the past develop some standards for new developments that would include water pump stations as well as wastewater lift stations. Those help set the standard of quality that you would like to see as a city, how things are developed, if they're going to be connected to your systems. Those are invaluable and highly recommended and many of our utilities across the state use those. In terms of private systems that aren't connected, those, unfortunately, you have no real ownership of those and can't provide any standards and enforce those on those systems. The only time that you can is when those become a part of your own system, like when they're converted. And at that point, if it's a private treatment facility, the plan at that point would then be to eliminate that treatment facility that's a private, small system and send that to sewer and that sewer would be built to the city's standards. So that is kind of generally how things are managed from that perspective. We don't typically see many systems that are privately developed and then donated to the city's ownership in terms of the pipes and the pumps that aren't built to that city's or municipality's standards.
Right, we don't accept them now, but they're, but we do allow private systems to connect.
Yeah.
And even some private to private. And so anyway, that's enough time with that, I just wanted your thoughts.
That's a real problem.
Yeah, we've got one right now that that's happened. We've got a private system that had, was actually the, in the county's system to begin with and then we, when we acquired the Mud Creek Sewer District, we got that system. And then they built the same entity, bought, bought property across the road, built another development and now that one flows into this other one and then comes to us. So, right now it's under the same ownership, but we're trying to figure out the best way to handle that one. If the ownership ever changes, then what, you know, what recourse does the city have? If they start experiencing high levels of inflow and infiltration, they don't maintain their system, you know, those kind of things. So we're definitely going to be looking at that and, you know, staff would like to recommend that anybody connects, anybody that connects to the city's system, whether it's water or sewer, that it be built to our standard, whether it be private or, or ours. But that, you know, that's going to make some people unhappy because developers, a lot of times like to build it.
I thought we already did that to a degree.
Mm-mm.
Even on.
Not unless they connect.
Even water?
If they connect to our system and give it to us, then yes.
Oh, okay, all right.
Only if they take it over.
Got you, that's, okay.
But a lot of times they'll build water systems, for example, they'll use PVC pipe. Well, we don't allow PVC. And they'll come back later and want to give it to us. So, you know, it ends up in the homeowner's hands and they don't need to be in that business. But we've definitely been talking about that as well.
Just state standards that.
Minimum, they're minimum state standards.
So maybe the state should increase their standard.
That would be nice. But that's, that's a whole nother.
I don't think it should just be a staff recommendation, I mean, I, I, it should be a rule, right?
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Oh, yeah.
That's why I'm bringing it up to, because it's a discussion that we've been having that.
Yeah, we wouldn't do that unilaterally. It would definitely come through.
No, you'd have to do an ordinance amendment.
Right.
No, I'm saying, no, I'm like, I'm surprised that it's not already a thing. I didn't realize that it wasn't.
I knew.
I didn't know that that, those things could happen.
State should definitely step up though initially.
These are future discussions, but I know that infiltration and inflow is a concern in these private systems and since we were talking about that, I just asked the question there. It's something that is in our plans to work on.
Right.
And bring back to you, but I'm planting a seed.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Zach. So we are five minutes before six and I know Drew Finley has been waiting patiently in Chapel Hill, no, excuse me, Boone, he's in Boone, sorry, Drew. Drew, I don't know that you can get through this in seven minutes. Is this something that we should put off, put off a little while and come back to a future meeting?
Yeah.
Sorry, Drew.
Yeah, John, this is, this is Drew, I, I think so, yeah.
Yeah, because I want to give the due time to it, I want, you know, I don't want to rush through it and we've been hit with some pretty large numbers tonight, so.
Yeah, if it's going to be anything about spending, you probably ought to wait.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a lot to cover and I think we would have to rush through it if we did it now, so.
Yeah, so Drew, we'll, we'll reschedule this at a future workshop meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for your patience. Yeah, but he's now, so just one other thing, Mayor, members of council, so that is all we have on our agenda. As we talked a little bit prior to the meeting, our meeting and workshop meeting in November is the day before Thanksgiving. I think I've talked to everybody, I think, I think we've talked to everybody and I think moving it to the Monday of that week, Monday, November 22nd at four o'clock, we'll have a special meeting that week and cover several items on that Monday and that way we'll stay away from the Thanksgiving holiday, so. Also remind the public of our Police Department grand opening next Wednesday. The ribbon cutting is going to be at four o'clock and then the public can have a tour of the new facility, which is a great facility, beginning at four thirty next Thursday, so invite everybody to come and see, see your building. That's all I have there.
All right. Anyone have anything else they want to say tonight? If not, we are adjourned. See you next week.